Good evening. We're going to start our Committee of the Whole, Board of Aldermen, June 16th, 2020. We have two items for this session. First is the Sanitary Sewer INI Reduction Program. Second one is Stormwater Master Plan Phase Two. Both of them will be presented by Jose Leon, our Public Works Director. Floor is yours, Jose.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Board of Aldermen.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, do we need to take roles since this is an official committee meeting? All right. Thank you.
You're writing down already.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Walters. Alderman Hunt.
Here.
Alderman Geiger. Alderman Green. Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderwoman Emerson. Alderwoman Van Buskirk.
Here.
Alderman Van Buskirk.
Here.
Alderwoman Memms.
Here.
And Alderman Ward. We have a call. Actually Alderman, I see Alderman Walters is just walking in.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started unless you want me to. Okay. Well, thank you for being here this evening. If you were wondering why I haven't spoken much, you're going to get a full dose of me this evening, a whole hour's worth maybe. We have two presentations to put before you this evening, some what I would call exciting work for us that we've been working on in Raytown Public Works. Before I get started, we have a couple professionals here, three individuals from George Butler Associates, our on-call engineering services. If you wouldn't just raise your hand, let them know who you are. And we also have Lisa Odell with Little Blue Valley Sewer District. She's here as well, just in case you all start throwing too many items at me, they can help me defend some questions. So, we're going to get started. So, this first one is about sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration reduction program. Just as a FYI going forward as I talk here, when I say the term INI, I'm referring to inflow and infiltration. So, when I say INI, that's inflow and infiltration. Go ahead, Jason. So, what is INI? This graphic here, I'm going to point to this wall since it's closest to me. This graphic here, you can see that inflow are basically sources of water into our sanitary sewer system. If you can look here, the top left of the picture, the roof drain connection, that's a hard source, that's a hard connection. That's rainwater. It's not water that we want into our sanitary sewer system, so we call that an inflow source. The white is infiltration. Infiltration generally comes with poor infrastructure. You can see the cracks and items in the pipes and in the manhole. That's infiltration. Also, roots can come into poor sanitary sewer systems as well. These are ongoing issues that you all have heard about, but I'm just, you know, trying to go over it at a very high level real briefly. So, that's what INI is. Next slide. So, does Raytown have an issue with INI? Short answer, yes, we do. This photo to the left is a photo of one of our pipes that we have in Raytown. It's a, you could see the cracks is what the arrows are pointing at in our system. Those are linear cracks that follow the pipe for quite a ways. And this is where groundwater, when it rains and the water comes around the pipe underground, infiltrates the pipe, infiltrates our system. And on the right, this is a inflow from a leaky manhole. So, Jason, that's a video. If you could just press play for that, on that. Is it playing? Can you play? Just click play, click on it.
It says, uh...
Oh, man. That was such a great video. Can you go, can you stop the presentation, hit escape, and then try to play it from there? There we go. No. All right. It's not going to play. Oh, my gosh. Such a great video. So, what this video would show you, and I'm happy to email this out to Damon, he can share it with you all. It would show you that this is after a rain event or maybe during a rain event. It's looking in a manhole, if you will. And in a sanitary manhole, you'll see what we call gray water. That's the water that you don't want to touch, right? That's the sewer water. Well, this, what you see here actually in this photo or the video that won't play is the freshwater. That's freshwater coming into the manhole. So, that's infiltration into a manhole. So, again, it not just, it doesn't just come from pipes, it can come from manholes as well. It's unfortunate that this video won't play, but we'll go ahead and keep going. Go ahead and go back to presentation, Jason. Current slide, there you go. All right, next slide. So, does Raytown have an issue with INI? Short answer, continued. These are some photos from our rain event that we had on May 27th, May 28th, rain event that we just had a couple weeks ago. The manhole that you see there on the left side, that's the 59th and Raytown Road manhole. You see, you know, water coming out of it, the manhole's floating, that's generally what we would say. And then a Southwood Lagoon, 6 million gallon capacity lagoon, that's intended for, to hold water, hold sanitary water, so it doesn't, you know, overcapacitate Little Blue Valley or, you know, treatment facilities. It was pretty much near capacity during that rain event or after that rain event. So, quite a bit going on. Go ahead.
Where is that lagoon, the Southwood Lagoon?
Southwood Lagoon.
87th Street.
87th Street and...
Melter and Clipper Road.
Okay, I am familiar with it then. Okay, I just didn't, I didn't connect that.
Yeah, I should have put the location there.
I didn't connect that to Southwood, but I have been there, I know where it's at. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so this next slide here, this is great information, I feel. Little Blue Valley, they gave us this, these graphs. These arrows are basically, well, what this graph is showing you is the amount of sewer water that's being treated, or water being treated over time. So, generally speaking, we're at about 3 million gallons a day, 3 million gallons a day, then it rains, and then spikes up. It stops raining, goes back down, rains again. So, you can see what I'm showing you here are rain events and how it translates into data for us. As you all know, we pay Little Blue Valley to treat our water. So, the more water we send their way, the more cost there is for us. Next slide. So, in this slide, this is a closer look at actually the rain event on May 27th, May 28th. And again, 3.22 million gallons a day, that's where we are, and then it rains, and you can just see this really fast rise in the water levels. And it stays like that for quite some time as it's raining, right? And then you see this gradual decline back down to, well, I guess what we would call So, think of this in terms of the tighter, the tighter our system is, if our pipes and our, and our manholes didn't have an issue with a leaky, with leaks, this line would not be so vertical. It's so vertical because water's just getting into the system at a very quick rate, and it's making their system, basically their data, it just shows the water levels are high very fast. And then think of it on the opposite end, next slide, Jason. The tighter our system is, the quicker, right, the quicker the water should go back down. The water levels should go back down in the data. So, you can see that it started raining around 8 o'clock on May 27th, right? Then it kind of stopped, and then it started again, sorry, May 27th, started again at 6 o'clock, and this jumps right up, right? INI, just right away. Well, look how long it took to get back down to normal. So, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, 31st, 1st, 2nd, I don't know what that is, I lost count, about five days, somewhere in there, to get back down to normal. And that's not because it kept raining. We know it stopped after a day or so. It's because the groundwater just continued to get into the system. And that's what, that's what we're showing you here. So, next slide. Does INI cost us money? Well, I kind of briefly touched on that a little bit, and I think you all know it does. But I wanted to show you this information because you can see how Raytown compares to other cities. Some cities around us, neighboring cities, Jason cities, they've, they've done quite a bit of work addressing INI in their sanitary sewer systems. But if you look here at, not the, not the top circle, but the one below, so first quarter, and they're on our fiscal year, is that correct? So, that's November, December, January, dry year, dry season, not raining a whole lot, not a lot of INI. We're at about 10 and a half percent there. Well, and then we get into the rainy season, and it goes almost to 14 percent, right? And so, you're thinking, well, what does that, what does that mean? I don't know how that compares. Well, just let's look at Independence right next to us on the, on the left side. Independence is at 21.8 first quarter, second quarter, 21.9, 22. So, they've, they've not even jumped a percent or half a percent. We've jumped nearly, we've jumped 3 percent. And you can kind of see that play out if you look at other cities in this information, right? So, we know that INI is an issue for Raytown. We know that it costs us money. It will continue to cost us money, it will continue to cost us more money. And truthfully speaking, a lot of the dollars that we've been spending are going to really Little Blue Valley and helping having them, you know, treat our water, you know? So, next slide. So, what work have we completed to identify INI? Cities spent, you know, lots of good money, lots of good time on staff's part. We hired Bartlett and West in 2003 to 2006 to do basically four phases of studies and work out in the field. This is, this is great work. Lot of good information, particularly if you're interested in reading it. Lot of good information. Next slide. So, in these four phases, you know, they came up with, you know, this is, these are the goals. They broke each phase into different sections of our sewer shed. We have 14 sewer sheds is what I'm showing you here. They broke each phase up into, in studying certain sewer sheds. And, you know, they did enormous amount of work, and they did some smoke testing, they, they looked at, you know, private INI sources, public INI sources, they did some TV inspection. They did, they did a gamut of things to evaluate our system. And mind you, this is from '03 to '06. So, when I think about that time, I think about technology and how, I mean, in today's terms, how limited we were with technology sometimes, back then, even then, it's hard to say, but even then we were. And, but the one good thing that happened, next slide, the one good thing that came out of this is they, they told us, these, these are areas where the city should focus on INI, capital improvements. These are some manhole, these are the information from manholes, leaky manholes, good manholes, et cetera, et cetera, that you guys should think about turning into projects, and the city did. Basically, from '06 to 2013, six or seven years thereafter, the city invested quite a bit of money addressing some of the things that came out of these studies, right? So, from 2014 to 2020, I wanted to see when I came in here, what have we done? What have we done since then? Next slide. And one of the things that stuck out to me, this is, this is some great work that our engineering technician Joey did. He helped us combine our projects into, into project names, some numbers. Well, I won't read them all, but I don't know, there's probably 20 projects in there, and I would say a good 14 to 15 are emergency. That's emergency, 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 one after the other. So, we've been, you know, not really programming and addressing INI as an issue that we have, you know, all this data, and we want to step back and plan and program properly. We've basically been chasing issues because they've come up to us. We had one this year. It was near Sonic off Raytown Traffic Way, it was around there, emergency. We had to go fix it. So, but I did, I am showing you in this arrow here, we did do East Basin Sewer Rehabilitation, CIPP, that's, you know, fix and place basically, pipelining. Next slide. Probably the best thing that came out of those studies is Bartlett and West mapped our system. GIS mapped our system. GIS is a mapping program. It's heavily used, if not being, departments over the nation, you know, they're, they're using GIS more and more. Asset management, mapping in general, just several things. And they mapped our system. Our information from a mapping standpoint is great. It's great information. It's dependable. Staff can pull up our map and say, where's the manhole around this property? Oh, it's right there. It's there, generally. Where's the pipe? Oh, it's right there, it's right there. Where are the pipes going? Going this way or that way? We know that that's true, generally speaking. There are some data gaps, and we call data gaps basically information we don't have. So, what is a data gap? And actually here, just coincidentally, this pipe that I highlighted here, there's a data gap. So, what does that mean, Jose? Well, we have a lot of good information here. We know what the upstream structure is, we know the downstream structure, we know what the material is. We know the invert, we know the slope of the pipe, we know the length of the pipe. So, my question, when I, when I showed this to, I think, Jason and Tony, I said, what's the diameter of the pipe? And they said, oh, actually, that's part of the 1 or 2 percent of our system, we don't have that information. I said, oh, my God, what would be the coincidence that, you know, I clicked on that pipe and we don't have the diameter? And I'm only highlighting that point because we're going to get to the task order here eventually, and when I talk about data gaps, you'll know what I'm talking about. We don't know the diameter of this pipe. Next slide. So, some more information, you know, we had a rate study in 2016, Berns and McDonald did that. And this graph is basically telling us, you know, do something or else, and it basically means it's going to get worse. Your INI issue is not going away. If you don't start addressing it, it's going to get worse, it's going to cost you a lot of money. And that impacts our residents, we know that. That impacts staff, it impacts everybody in Raytown. Next slide. So, this is, when I think of do something, I think of our, you know, hometown hero, Patrick Mahomes, you know, let's do something special, right? Just like he said in the, in the Super Bowl. So, you know, that's really what this is about, doing something special. Next slide. So, why are we coming to you this evening at the, at the committee to talk about this? Well, hopefully I did a decent amount of job talking about our needs, but basically, you know, we have a lot of information out there. It's in books, it's in four big books, actually five, a lot of charts, some graphs, lot of information. What we would love to do is centralize that information in a database. As I said earlier, the technology back then, we just, it wasn't at that level. And so, we have the, we have the system mapped in GIS, which is great, and we want to build on that. And we want to have so much more information in our mapping system so that staff knows, you know, when this pipe was fixed, when will this pipe be fixed? When this manhole was repaired? When will the manhole be repaired? You know, lots of information that we still want to put. We have scores on manholes, you know, is this a good manhole, is it a bad manhole? Just lots of good information in those studies. We want to centralize the data. GIS mapping, as I said there earlier, you know, we have a lot of new information. We've had a lot of projects that we did from '06 to '13. We didn't update our mapping to show when something was fixed, or when something was repaired, or eliminated even, and changed direction. We didn't do any of that. So, we have some information we need to update on a mapping perspective. Part of the, what we would love to do is develop a true CIP plan. And to me, when I say CIP plan, it includes maintenance and improvements. So, maintenance, think of maintenance. Maintenance is fixing all those emergencies before they come yelling at us. That's a maintenance project. Fix a pipe before it fails. You know, INI is a maintenance issue, but it's not failing, it's not going to fall apart in the street until it's way too late. There's so much INI, it just falls apart, right? So, it's a, it's a capital improvement problem, it's a comprehensive one that addresses improvements and maintenance from a long-term standpoint. And then fund and budget appropriately, and I say here, we'll learn as we go. It's hard for me to sit here today and tell you, well, this is where we should spend our money, and know exactly where we should be spending our money. I could be giving you a guess, and I'll probably throw a dart at a map, and probably wouldn't be a bad idea to spend it there. Or we can spend it at the, you know, residents who are screaming the loudest. But what we want to get to jumping down are data-driven decisions. That's where our Public Works Department is going. It's having information, and that driving us to make decisions, the best decisions for Raytown, the best investment for Raytown. So, our task order, data-driven decisions, decision-making, by analyzing existing data, develop a long-term INI reduction program, that's what we're calling this. Develop and improve comprehensive GIS database, kind of talked about that already, where some of our data gaps are, filling in those gaps. You know, basically gathering all that information and putting it in our GIS system. Determine where the gap issues are, provide the city with near-term recommendations for improvements, and priority basins based on existing reports and data. There again, going through the reports all over again. We don't imagine that it's changed if it hasn't been fixed, but it's probably gotten a little worse, so we can make some assumptions there. Developing a comprehensive five-year capital improvement plan. And then we'll get a report that summarizes the work that we've done. But to me, I know you all are not interested in another report, nor am I, truthfully. I'm interested in fixing problems. And Lord knows we have plenty out there, but the next time I come before you hopefully and tell you this is what we want to fix on the sanitary sewer side, it'll be because we did some tremendous work gathering all that information and producing a true program for you all. The cost is $115,000 roughly, and I'm here for questions. We have the, our GBA on-call engineers here for questions. Next slide.
Bill Van Buskirk.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for putting this presentation together for us. I appreciate it, and I believe this will be money well-spent, and I certainly favor, favor doing it. I think it, I think if we're going to look at what we need to do in the future, this is just a common sense approach to make sure we do the right things and spend our money in the right places, so I appreciate, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walters.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. There, I got it to work. First of all, is this something that we could tackle internally?
Yeah, so that's a good question. We have a, we have a new staff member, engineering technician, and we could tackle it internally. It will take an enormous amount of time on not just his part, on my part, on our city engineers' part, on lots of folks' part. I think there are some aspects we could certainly do internally, still taking a large amount of time, but there are some aspects that we just could not do internally. And so, I hope that answers your question. I know it's not a direct yes or no, but I, I guess, short answer, Alderman Walters, is I wouldn't have come to you with this task order if I felt like we could do it internally.
If I understood your answer correctly, parts that you feel you might be able to do internally...
Parts.
Because I see every dollar we don't spend outside the city as something that we can push back into, take care of sanitary problems in real, in real work is what I mean, is in solving them that way. It's just something I think that we should explore and see if there's a possibility we can meet halfway on it. And I'm not talking just cut $115,000 in half, but whatever you feel is possible, if you've got somebody new on staff who has background in this, I think it might be a benefit to all of your staff to be more familiar with it if it's something that they helped build.
Yeah. Yeah, so, one other thing I will say to that point is that this is a database, right? And databases should be maintained. I kind of talked about that earlier, that our database has not been maintained. We will do that internally. So, things that we do, once we get this set up and we start actually doing construction projects and planning, those are things that we will manage internally. So, I just wanted to touch on that real quickly.
Okay. I have another question, and that has to do with the sanitary sewer system in Raytown. Not all of it's in the Little Blue Valley Sewer District, is it? What, does that go to those figures that they show, or what you showed earlier? I think that map there, I don't know which number would, which watershed, those are watersheds, I'm guessing.
Sewer sheds.
Sewer sheds, okay. Well, they would follow the water.
Go ahead, you can talk.
The city...
I need to hold it.
The city of Kansas City, treats...
Sewer sheds 1, 2, 3, 4, and Little Blue treats 5 through 14.
Yeah.
Okay. Does this impact what is done in 1, 2, 3, and 4? Does it impact Little Blue Valley Sewer District?
It, it's the, it's total system. And I apologize, and I should apologize to Lisa because, you know, I asked her to be here. They, we just happened to be on a call, and I asked, she was showing me some information. I said, man, I'd love to use that for a presentation. I did not have time to contact KCMO when I was putting this together. I do know that they treat the other portion of our sewer.
Are they, are the bills configured on separate data for each water district, for the sewer districts, I mean?
I believe they are.
It's always been a mystery to me how we determine that, because I don't know if, if, if they, if they are. I don't know if there's any difference between mine, because I believe I'm in number four. And I think my neighbor across the street may be in number two. I guess it's all the same, isn't it? Can you just say 1, 2, and 4?
Yeah, 1, 1 through 4.
1 through 4, yeah, because that's the, there's Blue Ridge, I recognize it. So, everything going that way is probably Kansas City. I, if you could find out, I'd like to see how we're configuring that bill, because I...
That would be, Alderman Walters, that would be with the sewer department as far as finance. But, I mean, we give each individual a bill, but those two, Kansas City and Little Blue Valley, bill us based off of what we use as a city, and then we individually bill each of you as residents.
I see. Are their rates the same from Kansas City to Little Blue Valley? One higher than the other?
No, they're configured differently, but we could, but that does not, the total impact for us is like we mentioned, is sewer, sewer rate analysis is how we develop our billing, and then we bill out, and that's what we utilize to pay those bills back.
I appreciate that, I just, I'm just curious as to who's paying more.
Mayor James Van Buskirk.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Leon, for the presentation. It was very, very easy to understand, and you did a lot of work on it, and I appreciate it. I just want to say, I don't think we can put this off. I think this is something we need to get on it, and we need to get on it now. I see, you know, all the emergency things that come up that you had listed here, and you know that with this weather, this hot and cold, and hot and cold, we're going to have a whole lot more. to have a whole lot more. And we just can't sit around and twiddle our thumbs. We, we got to get on this. And it's going to benefit the city, it's going to benefit the residents, and I don't see how we can, we can dink around with this and, and put it off. Thank you.
Mr. Myers.
Jose, thanks again for doing that, it was, that was awesome. So, so what are you asking of the committee? Are you needing a motion to put it on the regular agenda?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Ms. Mims, you have a second. Mr. Myers, you have the first. And I'm going to go ahead and call a vote on that action, and then I have something to say before you finish up with this and move on to the second, because I know we're limited for time. Call roll, please.
Alderman Hunt?
Alderman Van Busker?
Alderman Bill Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderwoman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Alderwoman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Mims? And Alderman Walters?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, seven minutes.
I did have this light on. Is this working on this end? Is this going to work?
Yeah, you have to raise your hand, I'm not getting...
Oh, so that I can turn this off?
Yeah, you can turn it on and off, but all it does is turn the mic on and off. It doesn't do anything over here.
It's in the folder, Jason. Open the folder up.
Okay, go ahead if you have a question.
My question was, because I know this is a lead...
In the US Speaker.
Which one did you want?
Bush at the green.
Okay, that's what I had, but then I turned it off, because it was...
The folder on the taskbar.
The question that I had right before this was, because I know this is something that we're needing to move in this direction to get this done, and Alderwoman, she took, she asked pretty much what I wanted. But do we have a lot of emergencies at the present time that we need to start moving toward quickly?
We, we don't have, I guess an emergency to me might mean something different than it does to you. I guess, we certainly, we certainly have some projects we could...
Right.
...go out and fix, that we know that there are issues, certainly some areas.
Because we were chasing some of them, there was the pipes that were bursting and stuff, so I think we've gotten it under control enough for us to prioritize.
Right, and so, we do have, have some pipe bursting going on right now, at this moment, and some pipe replacement on the sanitary side, right now.
Yep.
All right, Jose, before we wrap up on this, again, thank you and your staff for doing such a great job. I do sit on the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. What I'd like to address is some things that Mr. Walters and some others have, but Mr. Walters, basically. The, the, the flows from our little city are as much as a lot of larger cities at times, because our pipes are in such bad shape. As Mary Jane Van Busker said, so well. You can't wait on some of this stuff, or it's going to get real expensive real fast. So we're talking about saving pennies using your staff, rather than jumping on this project with the engineers and getting in this, in this task force and getting this done. What I see is anytime we have a big rain, the flows shoot way up, and they have been. As we've done, the work you guys have done, it's, it's helping a little bit, but if we're going to get this to the point where we're saving our taxpayers' money at a large amount at one time, then we're going to have to start bringing down those inflows, so our flow is a lot lower. Because there's time, our inflows are so large, it's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we have to readjust with the Little Blue Valley Sewer District, so we don't have to try to pay like a million dollars in, in that time period. So, I commend you for doing that, and I think that we need to do what we need to do to get this rolling, and for you and your group to come up with the solutions and get on it right away, because we can save pennies all day long, but we need to save dollars for our, our people. And if we have to go outside to do that, to get it done in a, in a really quick, well-adressed manner, then that's what we need to do, in my opinion. So, all right. Yes, sir?
Can I make one?
One more, and then we're going to go on to the next thing.
I, I just wanted to say, over time, you know, we've been having to raise our sewer and part of that is this problem...
Exactly.
...that has created that. There's other things that have happened too, but that's part of it. And so, this could mean, over time, that we can get that sewer rate reduced.
Exactly.
And hopefully that will happen. Thank you.
Exactly on point. That's where, where I was trying to get to on that. I thank you very much, Mr. Van Busker, for putting it that way, too. All right, what do you have for us, Mr. Leon?
Yeah, so, jump right into the storm sewer, or stormwater, sorry. Stormwater Master Plan Phase 1 is, is what we're calling this. So, there's a lot of things that we don't have on the stormwater side that we have on the sanitary side, and that's really what this is about. So, go ahead, Jason. So, what, what do we know? Well, we know that the city has over 5,000 structures, and by structure, when we refer to structure, we're referring to manholes, curb inlets, area inlets, it's a lot of other things that are structures. Basically, connections to pipes is what they are. Sixty, we have over 60 miles of pipe, corrugated metal, concrete, lots of different material is out there. We have nearly one mile of line channel, concrete channels, and then, we, we do know that our GIS mapping on the stormwater side, it is just not accurate at all. We know metal pipe is a problem, I know you all know that. Metal pipe is a problem. Look at the photo there on the right, that's our sinkhole on 63rd, that's what it looked like before we...
Is that 63rd Northern?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's the one I located with my car for you all.
Yeah. And, and, and we know that we're chasing our tail, and that's what my little cartoon here is depicting. We're, we literally, we are chasing our tail on the stormwater side. Next slide. So, so we do not know, and these are some questions here, we don't know our whole system. We don't know where it is, we don't know what it is. You know, hard, you know, hard system concrete versus green system. So, one of the things, you know, we talk about our mapping, you look at this screen capture here, the blue line is our mapping today, and it's showing you, we know that there's a pipe somewhere there. Well, then you follow that, where that pipe ends, I'll just come over here, it's right here. You follow this, and there's a ditch right here, and this most likely is a private ditch, it's a waterway, that we would love to have mapped, if we can. Part of a data gap in our stormwater GIS mapping. Location, material, and size of stormwater system, again, we, we really don't know that information. I'll show you an example here in a second. We don't know how much funding we need to address maintenance issues, because we don't know where all the issues are. Which systems are, is maintenance good enough? You know, just, you know, line a pipe, or maybe we need more pipes, maybe we need more inlets. We don't know that information. Where do we need more infrastructure? Kind of spoke to that already. Which locations are the highest priority and why? That's the big one. Which locations are the highest priority, why? We have, we have not updated our mapping when improvements or replacements are completed. So again, just like I said on sanitary side, stormwater side, we've not done the same thing. We've, we've done some work over the years, which you'll see here in a second, we've not updated our map. But there's a reason why. Keep going. Our GIS mapping. So, MicroStation into GIS mapping, so if you are familiar with Microstation, it's basically, lack of a better term, it's basically taking a document on your screen and being able to take the paint feature on your computer and drawing the lines, drawing squares, certain colors if you want them, et cetera. Well, somebody, some years ago, Jason probably know better, they did a great work. They went out in the field, and they just started doing that. Took a map, started drawing lines, there's a structure here, looks like this pipe goes to this structure. Then they went into the office, got on Microstation, started drawing it on Microstation. Well then, when city got into GIS mapping, they imported that information into GIS mapping. Sounds great. But if you look here, what I'm showing you is how this information comes across for staff. There's a, there's a square rectangle there, the lines don't connect to it, it's actually an infrastructure. We highlight that pipe there, we want to see what information is associated with that pipe, kind of what I said to you earlier. Well, we don't know upstream structure number, we don't need downstream structure number, we don't know the material, we don't know the length, we don't know the diameter, we don't know. We don't know, we know we don't know this, but we also don't know what we don't know. Next slide. So the city in '96, I don't even know how long ago that is, I don't even guess, because it aged me, but they did a stormwater master plan, and really, what this plan was about was identifying areas in the city that they needed to put pipes and, and structures for flooding. Flooding. The highlighted areas are the areas where the city did projects to, you know, off of the study. But what do we know? If you're anywhere familiar with Raytown and stormwater, flooding is probably not the biggest thing that sticks out to you. Next slide. So again, I'm showing you a screen capture of our projects from the last five years. So very similar on the sanitary side as stormwater side. Emergency, 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 et cetera. Far more on stormwater side than the sanitary side. And a large reason for this, as we all know, is corrugated metal pipe, CMP. It's a reactive approach, it's not proactive. Next slide. So, you know, one of the things that we're, we're getting into pretty heavily in Public Works, I would say at the city in general, you know, Damon's leadership, is asset management. And we want to have a holistic approach, big picture. Where's the data, where's the inventory, what's the condition of it? We're in a plan and program. Systematic, so have this system of addressing issues before the issues get to, get to the point where there are holes in the street. A risk-based, so determining risk, determining the risk of these issues, you know, optimal. So it's, it's taking everything into consideration. You know, where is this, how much does it cost, what's the life of it, you know, there's so many things, taking everything in consideration as we go through this, and then something that's sustainable. So thinking long-term. Now, I, I want the work that we do while I'm in Public Works to last way longer than me, and I'm talking about life. Okay? So, asset management best practices, this is, this is our, this is our vision in Public Works. This is where we're going. Next slide. So, GBA task order. Why, why are we here before you tonight to talk about this? Well, we want to do a master plan, is what we're calling it. This is a phase one of four phases. And the first phase is to go and physically look at 1,300 structures. So we're going to GPS locate them, we're going to GIS map them, we're going to fill out not just the information you saw was missing, but way more information than that. We're going to wear out our engineers, is what we're going to do. And, you know, we're going to develop a five-year maintenance and improvement plan, is what we're going to do. This photo you see here on the right, 81st and Springfield?
Spring Valley.
Spring Valley? 81st and Spring Valley, our engineers are in the middle of design on that project. And they happened to walk upstream to look at a pipe or pop a manhole that wasn't even included in the project, and they said, "Oh, we thought we shared this with you." Well, this is a corrugated metal pipe with no bottom in it. That, that dark there, there's nothing there, there's nothing, just pointing at nothing, dirt. So again, you know, we'll, we'll find these issues, but we don't even know they exist right now. So, the cost of this first phase is roughly $100,000. It's about $110,000 each of the next three years, which, you know, I'll work with Damon and Finance to hopefully budget for, so we can get this completed for us, and just have information. Information so we can make data-driven decisions, so we can plan, program, and just know why we're coming to you all with projects. Next slide. Questions?
Mary Jane Van Busker.
Thank you, Mayor. The slide that you just showed on 81st, I think, in Spring Valley?
Yes.
Yeah, that's in my warden, and a constituent's called me about that a couple of times. He's very concerned over that, and I'm glad to see something's going to be done. But this is just like the other issue, we can't put it off. We played around with this long enough, and it needs to be done, and we need to get on Some of these maps here that you show that they connect and then they don't connect, that's almost like a Chinese fire drill, you know? I mean, really. So, I, I make a motion to approve this.
The, the motion would be to take it to board.
Or take it to board, yes.
Second? Ms., Ms. Emerson already had a second. Okay. I like, I like the, the constant reminder, it's data-driven. That's so important in, in making sure that we're spending our dollars wisely. Data-driven is always a good thing. Ms. Emerson?
Thank you. I just want to say, if you don't have the information, then how are you ever going to fix anything, until it completely breaks? So this is excellent, I'm very pleased with this.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Yes, do you intend to, the city's done master plans before, I'm pretty sure you're aware of that, stormwater master plans. Do you intend to gather the information from them to see what we've done in the past, and that pipe may have been one of the plans that was done, they've been doing them for so long? And I just, I'd be curious to see, you know, what, where we've been, as much as where we need to go forward.
Sure. Yeah, no, that's part of it, certainly, taking all that information into account.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Bill Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, you know, it, it'd almost be like if you were going to run a race, and you didn't know where, where you're supposed to go in that race. You just have a, a starting line, and you just take off, and you go, "Where do I go? I don't know." This is the same thing. You're gonna, you're gonna plan where, you're gonna know where you have to go, and what, what exactly we have. And again, this is just like the other, other presentation, this is just a common sense approach to looking at this for the future, and planning for what you need to do and where we need to spend our money. And I, I appreciate your work on this, and I think it will be, you know, it's not real cheap, looks like it's going to be, what, how many, how many hundred thousand over the...
Four phases.
Over four phases, probably 100, 100 or so each, each phase, right?
Yeah.
So it's, you know, it's, it's rather costly, but it's another one of those situations where I think we're going to have to spend some money to, to save money down the road. So I appreciate it, and I, and I certainly will favor this. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we have a first and a second. Call the roll, please.
Alderwoman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderwoman Emerson?
Yes.
Alderman Hunt?
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Moore?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Mims?
Motion carries. All right, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Second? Oh, who is that, Mr. Myers? All right, let's do it by affirmation. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone against? We adjourn, see you back here in just a few minutes at 7 o'clock.